Go ahead and set the date and time because it's sometimes when we turn it on with just the batteries that will do that. I hope it's not erased. Lindsay was running late. Her child disappeared while shopping and she just found her.
Hey Gary, you want me to sit over there?
I guess the alternative is okay. I'm sorry. I didn't think that through.
Alright, uh, call to order the lapel town council special meeting acting as the utility services board. Uh, utility operations strategic direction workshop from March seventh twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. It's time I'd like to ask everyone where you, uh, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Chad Blake.
Yes.
Brian Robertson.
Yes.
Roger House.
Yes.
Gary Chubb.
Yes.
And Lindsay will be arriving late. We have Evan McMullin.
Okay, um. At this time, we need to vote to amend the agenda to make the first item on the agenda discussion of our water project. I make a motion to amend the agenda to approve, I guess so.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Zach.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Roger.
Sure.
Yes.
Gary.
No.
I'm coming by some time.
Yep, alright, uh. Alright, next thing on the agenda then would be, uh, public comment and concerns. Uh, anyone have any public comment or concerns about anything? Uh, remember this is the, we are acting tonight as the utility service boards. This is anything utility related. Okay. Alright, uh, first item we will discuss then is our water project. Um. We have.
How about you let Rob talk?
I'll let Rob talk. That's a good idea.
I was gonna kick it out. Sure. I mean, we can talk. I, I don't care. I, I know more about this water project now than I ever thought I would.
So. As the council's aware, we received correspondence from contractor indicating their desire to no longer finish the project and request payment for any outstanding payouts and reason that is a basis for wanting to terminate the contract. Um. I've had different discussions with them in an effort to try to amicably move this along, um, as recently as yesterday. And, uh, they still haven't paid the town direct for the cost the town incurred, uh, over on Wilmette and Erie Street. Um, as a reminder, we have been reducing that amount from their last three payouts that had been processed. Um, they were given the opportunity to. Get right with the town prior to tonight's meeting with the understanding that, um, two additional applications for payment would be rather for consideration and approval. Um, they elected not to. Accept that suggested offer, um, so much so that their position now is they won't get paid in relation to money. Um. Received follow-up correspondence from them this morning, which I provided to.
Unofficial correspondence probably. According to contract, it needs to be via certified letter. So we have an unofficial email and most likely preview.
Well, and if we're gonna pile on, this is a contract we can pile on, but it's also addressed to individuals who are under the county's control. Uh. Be that as it may, um, this is the second version of the same letter that's been sent out. And, uh, at this point, I think we need to respond to the letter and then decide collectively how to address their desire to terminate the contract.
So. They must have a misunderstanding in reading the contract because their requirement on getting paid and what they're attempting to exercise. It's, it's section sixteen oh four in the contract that they're attempting to exercise in regards to the contractor's right to terminate the contract. And so doing it must have a cause for that termination. Uh, the reason why the payouts were withheld is simply because they caused damage to the town. The town incurred the cost of twenty eight thousand dollars. Uh, we withheld the payouts as per, uh, contract we're completely allowed to do. On top of that, uh, after negotiations with them, uh, they said, sure, we'll pay it back. And why, why can't we pay? You know, why does that twenty eight thousand dollars matter to us the most? Um, it's, it's because that was paid out of the general fund, not out of the fund, the S R F, but we can pay out of this to the end. So it took a direct hit to the town, not just the project. So they dealt, in my opinion, at this point, bad faith by saying, sure, we'll pay that. Sure, we'll pay that. And so the, the body paid out, uh, several payouts in good faith according to the negotiations that we had to move forward. Uh, eventually, we, the council decided to not continue to pay them out. Uh, the substantial, uh, uh, or se- sorry, uh, substantially completed.
Yeah, the current contractual completion date.
Was October twenty third, twenty twenty three. After that, liquidated damages are located within the contract that say one thousand dollars per day shall be approved. Uh, and it's not to penalize, but it's to incentivize essentially for the contractor to continue forward. So I believe at this point, what they've done is they're trying to cut their losses. Um, they believe that, uh, we still owe them for the other payouts, which, by the way, it's completed work. We'll pay them. But additionally, on top of the reasons for the two payouts or three, because one's partial, right? The payout ten is partially completed.
So we started reducing the amount that they were requesting with application number ten.
Right.
And that was the good faith effort that this council chose to make to say, we, we recognize that you've got something done. We also understand that you owe time. So we're gonna just let S R F sit on that money and reduce the amount we're gonna pay you until you get right with us. And we did that through ten, eleven, and twelve. Since that time, thirteen through seventeen have been submitted and enough is enough. This has been going on for nine months and we should all get a close service. So that's kind of where the council's really lying to us.
Which we have a right for those two payouts to not pay up to the fact that there's still speeding charges and, and blame about the first one. Uh, and additionally, I just would like to point out that Rob and his team have done a fantastic job because one of my goals was to try to nitpick as to where we might have broken down, if there were any issues. We've executed everything correctly this entire time, as far as I can see. And so that twenty eight thousand has been continuously carried over. They've been put on notice every single time as to that issue. But then on top of it, after the substantial completion date, uh, it begins to accrue liquidated damages. Those, they are fully aware of those liquidated damages and that, that gives the town a right not to pay those additional payouts after the October twenty third date, which the first payout patient will leave begins November first or November or something of that nature. Um, so they've basically attempted, and by the way, incorrectly have attempted because they've, they've, uh, they've also made a foul on their timeline, uh, when it comes to, uh, how they should have terminated this contract as well. Because sending an email and saying, as of today, we've decided to, uh, to end our contractual relationship with the town is, uh, rather ridiculous because the technical timeframe doesn't even end till next Monday because we received the letter on Friday. Uh, it's supposed to be seven whole days. And by the way, the way that the contract reads, uh, it would, on the last day, if it's a Saturday, it goes throughout and goes to the next business day, which is Monday. So it would be Monday the eleventh is the first time to pick to even actually send that letter to begin with.
Yeah, and I, I'll defer to you and Jeff, but in my mind, that clock just reset because the letter that came in today was dated.
Well, the first one was the notification as that they would cons- consider exercising that clause.
I didn't. I, I would wanna double, double check today's letter because I did an, I did an initial re-
Well, I don't know if it's a, it's a review or what it might be.
I did an initial look at it and it looked like the same exact verbatim letter that was sent up originally, just had it verbatim.
Got it. No, I mean, it's, it's pretty much, it's similar, but there were a little differences between them. So. What I've done so far is I, I've drafted, uh, a letter for, uh, it's on Jeff's desk. I've also given it to Rob as well to ensure that everything that I'm seeing and portraying well, because he's the engineer on the project, I'm not. But everything that I'm seeing is correct. When that's done, I'll provide it to, uh, you know, the town essentially. Uh, and I'd like this body to, uh, give pre-approval for the town executive to, to okay if we will send it when, when we're all, all set and done. And essentially what it does is it outlines that, no, you're, you're terminating for, uh, a, a cause that does not exist. Um, if you do exit the contract, these are the ramifications that will be incurred upon you. And by the way, I think that there's quite a few, um, there are quite a few. And then after that, uh, it basically says, how will we come back to the table? Uh, and try to negotiate, try to come to an amicable agreement on just finishing this project. Because that's all this town wants. That's all this body wants, is for this contract to be done. We want them to honor their work and their obligations to finish the job that they signed up for.
I have a question for Rob.
Hmm.
Pipe that's laying out there is it? We're having problems to area that we've had three walk, Fifth Street, we've got three watering brakes. And that was the last pipe they put in. Is the pipe that's laying out there in the sun degraded now to where it can't be used? I don't know that's where it can't be used. Are you talking about the pipe that's out behind the water plant, out by the maintenance building? It's got material that's out there.
Uh, with that pile of sewer plant.
No, there's a pile of sewer plant also.
Is it black?
Yes. That's it. That's the same pipe that they put in. Yep. We've got, uh, we've got an inquiry into the pipe manufacturer to give us something in writing on, on what it can and can't do and timeline associated with it. You've got the same situation out by the utility garage too. There's, uh, blue P P C, C nine hundred pipe that's sitting out there in the sun as well. And this is pipe we've already been for. Everything that's stockpiled out there, we're gonna do the inventory. I'm gonna have somebody come up and actually document everything that's out there. Uh. You have paid for a significant amount of material that has yet to be installed. I suspect that is included, plus some stuff that they may have removed. Um, but yeah, for discussion purposes, you, you have likely already paid for that. There are valves, there's tigers, there's fittings, there's pipe. There's a lot of stuff.
They were here as well and I received a call that said they're, they're, they're here picking some material up, seeming as though they're moving out. Well, the problem is, we still, at that point, have a, a good contract. There's no termination of agreement. And it's our hope that what they're really doing, I mean, we can all speculate, but it was our hope that what they were doing is simply preparing to do more work, to which they're under obligation to figure. Um, so it's not like we could afford them to not do that or try to go in and dictate what they're, what they're doing at that point. That's not, that was not our goal.
On the, back on the material question that you had.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when they request each month for payment of stored materials, they have to provide invoices to support the dollar amounts that they're requesting. So we will have invoices to reflect the dollar values that have been previously paid. And literally, we can go down each one of those invoices and see whether or not it's on site or if it appears to go in and has been removed from the site to make sure, however this ends up, that you retain ownership of it.
Question. If it be possible, if we decide to pay those payouts, if we do two change orders?
Uh.
One, one in the amount of the claims that we have, twenty eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and cents. And one for the cost of that pipe that we have followed with, that we have.
We talked about the change order route, uh, as it relates to the claim. And the problem with that is it keeps the money in the S R F fund. And it, it doesn't do the town a benefit to reimburse the general fund out of the S R F money because now you're twenty eight thousand dollars less of available S R F money to pay whoever to finish the job.
May I speak?
Yes, sure.
I wanna clarify, the money did not come out of the general fund. It came out of the water construction fund.
But still.
It came out of our money, but not the general fund. I wanna make that clear.
Water construction fund.
But, but back, you would be, if you reduce the con- because the contractor made that request initially. If you reduce the contract by that amount, that money is, is sitting in S R F money.
Right.
And sure, we could write a disbursement to reimburse the town for that amount. But you're reducing your remaining available funds by twenty eight grand to finish the job.
S R F money should not be used to pay for that repair. Ultimately, it is what it is.
That is, that is true. If you do the change orders, then that means money in S R F that we can use for the, if we end up having to redo the payments. And we destroy it and we'll.
It's currently in S R F right now because we reduced it by payouts. Uh. I just think, I think we'll, we'll, we'll figure that one out.
Right, yeah, we've got a, regardless, right now, they are not receptive, according to their email, to any discussion, negotiation, or anything moving forward.
They've been dealing in that way this entire time.
My, my take, my take on it is, this isn't a, an opinion. I don't have facts, lackadaisical. But my opinion is they never had any intention to reimburse it that amount. And I think they decided that they, um, cut their losses of the, of the, of the town.
Which, by the way, there are provisions in the contract several times. It says that they agree to this price. And unless other nego- other negotiations take place, they firmly agree to also assume the possibility of a, a loss on this. They have to complete the project regardless of if they lose money or not. They signed out a little too.
We, we authorize the change orders for things that were unforeseen issue, uh, on thirteen. So there's, you know, again, we, we've acted in good faith. They're acting bad faith.
They've, they've been given two time extensions.
And we're still not there. Yeah.
And I think there's actually email evidence that they're agreed to that, like, it's been a while.
Or, not, or, you were made.
No, that was in an audio. No, that was Rob and I met, Rob and I and Riley met with him.
Oh, okay.
To talk about, back in June, to talk about, and that's where we came up with it.
Okay.
I think Riley sent us a synopsis or a summary of that meeting and I think in that synopsis.
I think it.
That. It, it states that they, we, how they, we did collect, how we did that. I'll have to look it up, but I think there is.
Okay, so, uh, positive here for procedural, since we are meeting as the utility service board right now. Any action that we wanna take on our discussion of the water project, because I have to wait till our.
Seven thirty meeting?
Seven thirty meeting. Okay. Alright, fair enough. I, I'd say we're, it's up to date and up to speed and everybody knows what's going on with that. And, uh, we can move on to the next thing on the agenda. So with this, I think it's time for him to go to Jax. Uh. To, uh, start going over our twenty twenty four operations standing.
That fifth and central fix is still just temporary. It has not been fixed yet. I just wanna make you aware of that.
Yep, we're aware.
Okay.
It was a very big topic of discussion.
Yeah, discussion about warranty, then maybe replace that entire pipe.
I, I'm just, I didn't know if it was on the same page with that.
Yep.
So, why are we here? We are here because you don't have the utility service board. There's communities that do, um, and, and it may be a, something for you as, it may be something for the council to consider, okay? I would, I would strongly urge you to consider the creation of the utility service board, the establishment of that. It's not a difficult ordinance process. Uh, I've been through it two or three times in my municipal management career. What it does, it form, forms a body that allows you all to take a step back as the council, not have to meet like this as the U S B because you don't wanna have a lot of meetings as the council. The utility service board, they can truly oversee the operations of the utilities. Right now, to me and my assessment, what's happening is there's a breakdown of oversight. Um. I'm not saying there's a breakdown of oversight from a liaison perspective. I'm just saying that historically, over time, there is a breakdown of oversight. From council level to no U S B to management to, uh, just future forward thinking, it's gone. Doesn't exist necessarily in a good, efficient manner for utilities. It's just an assessment looking, I guess, on the inside now. I'm not looking from outside in, but looking inside. So I, I have in this first part of the agenda, I don't think we need to stay for three hours tonight. I think what I, what my intention tonight was, get you all to meet as the utility service board to truly begin the process of understanding that this is a major business. It's rates, not taxes. You cannot mix the two. Uh, we need to start to treat it as if it is a business. And what happens with town councils is this. You haven't put the rates where they should be to have a safe, efficient, properly functioning, well-maintained, uh, replacement of capital utility. You haven't done it, okay? It just is what it is. Now, the reason why S R F now says, if you don't have eighty five dollar water rates and eighty five dollar sewer rates, don't ask us for subsidized money. Don't. It's not gonna happen because what's happening out in the market is, what's finally going on is that rates have stopped being political and they've started to be desperate. Communities have gone in desperation mode and go that, wow, our asset's so, so old and so deteriorating and so not working properly and so piecemealed together that we have no choice now. Our, our water, our water store bills are gonna be hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy bucks. My, my, this, now, that's not because of what I just said, it's because of growth and just where I live, that the system's brand new, okay? It's just was the cost of making a brand new system. So tonight, really kinda what, what was the, what the point was, is that John's come to me on a couple, for a couple of things and that some of those are budgetary and some of those are staff related and some of those are, uh, small needs that the water company might have, the utility company might have. We haven't really talked about the gas. That seems like an animal that is a, quite a beast. Um, is, first off, I've asked you a couple of times, and we've talked about this, the current budget, okay? Has the town council seen the current utility budget? I know you're acting as the U S B, but you're gathered as the council. Have you all seen the current utility budget? Okay, probably a problem, okay? Because, no, you are the U S B. So, and what I've heard has happened historically is the budget was created this way, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you just took a line, where that line came from, I don't know, and kind of increased it by three percent from the C P I. Uh, and that's how you did your utility budget. So I, 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 I think that right now, and I don't know if one's been actually created, created.
One has been created. I have not finalized anything for the end of the year because you guys are the ones who need to make the budget for the utilities.
So it's hard for us to understand what we need to do from a day-to-day operations perspective on the utility if we have no idea how much that actually should cost to run the utility. So my suggestion is not to go over the current budget tonight, but to let you all know that there's, there is a sense of urgency on March the seventh to have a budget created for, for the twenty twenty four year for the utility so that we can give the utility service board, you, a good monthly budget management report that shows a P N L statement so that you know in real time, every month, what the P N L is of each utility, profit and loss statement. So then you can go, if you don't go at the end of the year, why in the world is the sand sewer minus hundred and seventy five thousand dollars? What happened? So I would suggest that the very first thing that we don't, um, is that we all sit down, and this will probably take about three months, okay? Yes, we have a current, we have to run the current utility. I get it. Probably sixty to ninety days, you sit down and really with John, with Mike and with staff and go, how much does it really cost to run these utilities? Not how much does it cost based on our current rate structure? Not that how much does it cost because we don't wanna tell the residents that they have to pay more than fifty bucks a month? But how much does it really cost in twenty twenty four dollars to on a day-to-day basis run these three utilities? Do a budget that's based on that analysis, chemical, um, labor, uh, replacements, uh, s- sludge being delivered away. I can go down the list of things that, that we're gonna have to put in there. Water, what, what's, what's the water cost? Get it finalized, get it to a financial advisor and say to that financial advisor, now, does our rate structure cover this actual true budget method? And if not, then you're gonna have to have a conversation about it. We just have to raise rates, not to do a capital project, but just to meet the demands and needs of our operating. And that's probably where you're falling off a little bit at this point, is that you don't really truly know the true operating budget to make sure these budgets are running efficiently, safely, um, that you're setting back some depreciation dollars. I know that there's accounts, but they say that your depreciation should be five percent of your total annual revenue. You're not setting back, back right now. Trust me. You're not setting back, back right now, trust me. Okay, five percent of your total annual revenue. It's a big number.
This is an ongoing problem, this is not something that just crept up the lives.
Correct, absolutely.
Something that's just over years and just kept accumulating.
I heard, when did they dig the first, uh, outhouse in town, that's probably about when it started.
Not, not, not pointing any fingers at all, this is, this is a, this is a, this is a, if the animal tests to, this is very typical of most towns your size that have the opportunity to run their own utilities. Is the ru- the, the operating of the utilities has become so politicized, and what I mean by that is rates are political, right? If you try to raise them, a million people show up and say, you can't do that, and then so for political reasons, the council goes, okay, fine. And then you get to the situation where you are, uh, scrambling to try to save the utility, to make sure that it runs properly. So, I, I would suggest that we're not gonna do this tonight. I'm, I'm trying, what I would like to do tonight is set priorities. And I would suggest that over the course of starting now, cause I'm, I'm a deadline guy, I like deadlines. The council makes a proclamation that states that on May seventh, that the utility budgets will be completed and to the financial advisor, and we will know exactly that we should be charging the ratepayers to operate these utilities properly. That, that was, that's kinda why it's on the agenda tonight, and for you all just to have a discussion about it. I mean, you haven't seen the budget, so we haven't done a P and L statement. We haven't, not because of New York Treasurer, we just haven't, we don't have that system in place. You got your fund balances, she gives you a fund balance report, so if you really go through the fund balance report, you can see it brought in this much money and paid out this much money, and it's got this much money in an account. That's essentially a P and L statement, cause you can't see it line by line right now unless you really fish for it in the appropriations report. So, though we're still running a utility, probably not, not with the resources that we really need to run. Okay?
So, that's a big question I have on that, um, from a consultant looking at it that is working on our standard procedures. Um, how much of getting those standard operating procedures in place will dictate how the budget has to go?
Uh, you can do the budget without your SOP manual, uh, but your SOP manual will probably want to continue to find things that you didn't think about in the budget, it will probably change some of those budgetary items. Okay, we wanna put it to you that way. Because here's the thing, IDIM probably would tell you right now, and we've done staff evaluations, they would probably tell you you don't have enough staff to run these utilities properly. We did a staff, if you went under an agreed order right now, the first thing they're gonna ask for is a compliance plan, staff evaluation, and can't remember the other one, but that's, they're gonna ask for those three items. And the staff evaluation is probably gonna show that you don't have the proper staff, paid at the proper levels, in the proper seats to actually function these utilities like they should be, like IDIM would expect you to be running. And what that means is, you're gonna have to pay more money, okay? It, it is what it is, um, and you're gonna have to pay people that have expertise a little more money than you're probably paying them that. But we don't know that, so we do a budget, we talk to the staff, we go out and we look at what other utilities are doing. Um, I'll tell you the, the going, and I know there are some people right in here tonight who are, work for the utility utilities. Um, about twenty-seven dollars an hour is your laborer fee, is your laborer, is, is across the state. To keep a laborer, to train them, for them to be long, have longevity and understand the system and start to get licenses, twenty-seven, twenty-nine dollars an hour. Do you know what you all are paying that? Nowhere near.
I agree with that one.
Huh?
I agree with that statement.
I know you do. But I'm not saying that cause they're here. I'm just telling you that for continuity of operations, for consistency, for people that know what they're, you know, not that our staff doesn't know what they're doing, but to keep them, keep them happy, keep them trained, you're twenty-seven bucks an hour. And I think we're sixteen, right? I think sixteen, eighteen, or something like that.
Where are you starting?
Yeah. Yeah, in, in, in the tiny town of Nashville, they start at twenty-three fifty. That's where the laborers start, they're five. Okay, start at twenty, and the only reason that happened was because we did this budget process. And the financial advisor says, hmm, you can't cover your budget. And the council will find, and they raise the rates to cover the operations of the budget. And the thing completely turned itself around, utilities went, completely different direction with that. I mean, became kind of a, kind of a, probably a case study for how you should be doing things in a small town to run the utilities. Yes, SOPs will change it, I don't think we have to wait for the SOP manual to be done, um, to do this initial step. And I would just suggest that this initial step is the most important step, because John's come to me with items that are really a budgetary thing, you know? Um, raises and benefits and CDL licenses and, um, I don't know what else. And we don't have a real good answer because there's just nothing consistent. Um, you know, another thing that comes out of this budgetary stuff is the lighting in the, in the barn out there. You know, we just bought lighting, or somebody installed lighting or something. And I, I looked at John one time and I said, isn't there a, like, a capital plan or money set aside for you to actually call a electrician to have really good, commercial grade LED lighting installed throughout this entire building instead of? Cause I think he was, there were some lights you were putting up that you just went to Lowe's or somewhere, got lights and put them up yourself. We shouldn't have to be running a utility where this guy has to go up and actually change the lighting in the facility where they are. We should be running a utility that we can call an expert, electrician, buy lights and have them installed that are gonna last for the next twenty-five years. That shouldn't have to be a piecemealed desperation, oh my gosh, we need them. Our budget and our strategy will help us, our capital strategy, our, our short-term capital strategy will help us to, to do those things without having, not a panic, but you know what I mean. Okay? And it's just because we don't have that. So, when it's in front of you all the time, you, you council members will understand that we brought in one point two million and our budget's one point three five. We did a really good budget, we know exactly what that budget is. You may go over it, cause we don't know how much water we're gonna buy, you know, we don't know some, we, we may have to manufacture more water. Right, but at least you have a budget that you can follow, you can try to s- stay at that standard. So, that's a long-winded way of saying we're missing that item, and I think it's causing us some harm.
The, uh, utility service board, is that like a citizen group, is it part of citizens, part of utility, part of council? How, how does that actually work?
Yeah, so you establish it as a council, you as a council appoint the members. You can make it, uh, you can give them a whole bunch of authority, or you can pull back their authority. There are some utility service boards that have all the authority after the council approves their budget to spend that money, sign contracts, hire superintendent, so on, so. There are some councils that say, wait a minute, we don't, we don't want them to have that much authority. And you can write it so that the establishment have said, have said, utility is an agreement that you have to come to the council before you hire a superintendent. There, there are a lot of, um, uh, I wrote one that recently, in twenty twenty-one, for a council who passed it, who, they gave the USB all the authority to spend and hire and, and go on contracts, and really, they are the ones that do the o- every, every day oversight of the operations of the utility. So, it just depends on what you wanna do. Usually a five-member board, uh, four-year appointments, you know? It's not a, it's, it's a pre- it's a pretty good thing because they're focused just on that item. Right? You, you all, as, as council members, you're focused on not only that, the ratepayers, but you're focused on the tax budget. And it makes, makes it hard for you to break off as a USB to, how, how often have you met as, as the USB owner?
Looking at it.
Right? I mean, that's, that's my point exactly. And this is why we kinda wanted to call this meeting, was to get to a point where we get used to running the utility. A lot of people say governments should be run like a business, I don't believe that, it's not a business, it's a different animal. The utility, on the other hand, it is, it is a business, you're manufacturing water, you're selling it to a customer, they're paying you rate, providing them service, uh, it's, it is more business-like, there's a, there is an inventory, number of inventory days. There is a cost of goods sold, there is, it's much different than the tax item, so you gotta start thinking that.
Do, do you have some lovely, uh, Excel forms and other items to send us so that we can start looking at and working on this in a nice sensible manner, instead of us just stare at a piece of paper with a bottle of water?
I do, what I'm gonna do with Teresa is have her give me what line items currently exist. If I think, and I'll work with Dan, if, if there are any li- line items we think are missing that need to be added to, uh, operate the utilities in John and Mike and whoever else, we'll add those lines, and then we'll do a blank column, essentially as a blank column, as opposed to looking at, you know, a lot of times you'll look at last year's budget number. I think for you all in this time around, I guess we'll look at the current budget, but we have to be careful about not just saying that, hey, let's just add a certain percentage. We have to really go through and talk to the operators and say, what really should we have spent last year on this, on this item? And why didn't we? You know, really should cost blank, and that's how you get to your really true budget of the utility.
Can I ask you?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, I can go ahead, because I need to do it, is finalize the end of the year. I'm gonna go ahead and do that. You guys can still make up a budget, and then I can go in and adjust, adjust it whenever you guys get it finished, and it will reflect what you actually wanna budget for the year.
And remember, the utility budget's not controlled by the LGF, it's just something that you should do. So, it's not like you know, miss deadlines or anything, it's just a good, it's a good procedure that when the tax budget is approved, the utility budget should be approved right about that same time. So, in October, November, the utility service board should have met, starting in June, looked at their half-year numbers and said, eh, no, something's gonna come way over on this, and we'll go way under on that. You know, the cost of chemicals, that's the treatment plan went up by seventy-five percent this year, we're gonna have to pay attention to that, and gas is gonna be this next year, and, and, uh, that budget should be presented to you about the same time that you're adopting the tax plan. In, in a, in a normal view, this year obviously we're gonna be a little bit far.
Okay, all right, very good. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Dax, obviously. I'm sure at some point, uh, of course, we get some information, uh, we will probably schedule a workshop meeting for us to sit and all stare at those numbers together.
Yeah. I would just suggest that we're done with this for May end. Cause then we'll go into twenty twenty-five.
We should be in really good shape for twenty twenty-five.
Pretty soon, so. I have on the agenda next current staffing needs, I know that we've talked about, uh, John, I, I didn't know, or Mike, either wanted to address any of this. I don't know where your staffing levels are, I don't know what your needs are. Um, I have heard that you do need people.
Yeah, we use a better.
How many?
We, uh, I believe we're three short right now.
Three short right now. So, my question would be, where is the three short coming from? And this is, just follow, uh, the, the logic of the question here. So, like, for me, at my business, I have to look at the, what am I not getting done or accomplished to justify the additional help, which is a very standard way. So, like, right now, uh, we're extremely busy, I need another set of hands that'll at least alleviate pressure and be able to get us to hit our deadlines, because there are things that aren't happening on a daily basis that need to happen. So, things are slipping through the cracks, we're getting the important stuff done. So, my question would be on the staffing. What aren't we getting done right now, and what people is it gonna, how many people is it gonna take to get that done? So, I'm not saying that you don't need people, you know, cause I know everybody in the world would love to have more help, but, you know, I, I wanna know what we actually, what are the skill sets? What are the positions that, you know, we need this person to work with Mike to make sure that we can get some potholes filled? We need this person, or, so what, what are we needing to get accomplished with those three people? What's our immediate?
Well, it's always good to have an extra hand, I mean, but, uh, right now, um, well, when Mary was here, we, we had, uh, two positions that we needed to fill for, for whatever reason there was. But we hadn't posted, nobody ever, the people we did hire for that position were, they quit.
So, so we, we had turnover and had it replaced.
Yeah, they've always turned over, um, we, we've always had high turnover here because of the pay, again. But, um, as for what we're getting done, we're going wherever the fire screams the loudest, and that's what we're gonna do. Now, that's basically an everyday thing.
So, if, if we, what needs to hap- cause we're gonna have fires every day.
Oh, yeah.
So, what do we need to take care of the stuff that's not on fire so that it can stop fires in the future? Does that make sense? So, I don't think you're gonna be able to give us an actual, like, dead-on, I need three people a day, or I need five people.
Let's just take the.
You come back and say, we need ten, and are able to go, this is why, this is why, this is why, well then we need ten.
Just, um, look at the wastewater plant, we have one guy down there working.
That, you can't do that.
You can't do that.
You, you absolutely, IDIM, so lem- let me give you the, just real quick, uh, Dan, the, uh, the standards that Nathan used, which.
OSHA, uh, you know, IDIM's got standards on personnel, OSHA would not allow one person working around wastewater treatment. Which is not a safe situation.
So, that would I would take me the critical information.
That would be a.
You don't know what we need.
Well, here, here's a, here's a standard right now that, that's used for staff eval, one, um, for a point five to one MBD. What was this plan?
Point four.
Point four?
Yeah.
So, close enough, you should have seven staff members. Um, six point four eight staff members, so let's, let's say we should, that's just wastewater, so let's say that we have five. Okay, let's say that there are five. Um, management responsibilities, plan staff responsi- election system, somebody who's responsible for, um, you know, overflow, somebody who's responsible, it, it goes down a, a list of, of what those, why you have that amount of staffing so that on a day-to-day basis, laboratory, um, just maintenance, sledge handling, um, the, the, it goes down a list of why you have this staff. And then it also goes down a list of oak, of, uh, OSHA and IDM requirements for you to adequately and properly be running your treatment. So, s- five is about, that doesn't include the leader, um, five staff members under the superintendent to run the wastewater regen. How many do we have now, one?
One.
One who's designated to wastewater?
One.
Holy.
What goes through the wastewater?
Menosence.
Well, he must be a superhuman, cause he's doing five people's work. Or that, or there's stuff that's not getting done. And that's why I asked a question, what's not getting done?
Well, I mean, here, I guess in my thought of it is that you should, each department should have two people, at minimum, just as a minimum, plus a supervisor. So, that's eight people plus the supervisor. We should have at least nine pe- on, people on a general basis. That way they can rotate, wastewater has an issue that day, you can pull a couple of people that have a general knowledge on that general area, you know, where potholes aren't gonna get fixed that day. There's a good excuse why that need to be done, that's the example. But right now, it's, as John was saying, it's fired, and that's it. You know, I mean, I guess in my thought, that would be the minimum of.
Whatever screams the loudest, that's where we go.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Well, I would say we need those staffing standards sent to us.
Got you, Zach.
Got you. I, I will tell you that this is the first time I'm overhearing of that standard.
Why are we here?
Yep. Why you are here?
Why are we here? And, you know, town board meeting in a little bit. So, so many of the juniors taking care of the flood drain, which is helping after the flood now. And of course, gentleman is still available, he has wastewater, particularly with this plant, wastewater treatment plant. I would say if we have knowledge for this plant, if we, if we still have. And he also has, yeah, yeah. I don't know whether one of the other.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, you're, we're currently looking at your wastewater utility asset, uh, doing the asset, uh, management and, and, uh, master plan, so I just wanted to put that on there just to, you'll be a part of that, constantly be a part of that process. I just wanna remind you.
And that, and that's also where some, uh, we have, for we have the asset, like, ask to get a cabinet.
Now, I would ask you as a, as a council, but also a USB, do you have any idea what the overall true condition of your water asset is? And what the true condition of your gas asset is?
Well, only based on what we've been told by engineers or your project.
I mean, I'm, I mean comprehensively, no. This is our, this is our asset, this is how much it's gonna be needed to fix our asset, you know, so that there aren't fires. And then this is how much it's gonna cost to expand our asset, if we wanna expand that asset. In fact, if y'all don't know, you're gonna know the sanitary sewer suit, trust me, that man will do it. They'll, they'll, you're gonna know it, you know exactly what, what's going on with the asset. I would just suggest that the entire utility, that you understand what's happening with the other team. Um, cause you don't know it. I just wanted you to chew on that, think about these things. That's all I got. Billing, uh, we're, she's bringing on a staff member, and she's done a good job of interviewing, it's gonna be talked about here in just a little bit. I didn't know if you had anything to say about billing tonight. I know that we've talked about how we collect bills of changing technology and doing it, uh, electronically through Wi-Fi or through the tower and the meter, you know, the meters, AMI meters. That, instead of driving around anymore, literally that information will come right to the office, to the building, billing department. I think we've talked about that, but that's part of asset planning and part of budgeting.
I thought we bought a computer program to do that.
You did, right now there's a handheld, there's a handheld device, how, how much do they have to drive around?
Raymond doesn't have to drive around much at all, and it picks up all of his gas and then the new Neptune meters. And then Mike goes around, it takes about three hours to drive around at maximum to get the rest of them.
And in the past three years, we have, with the new Neptune meters we've got, we have replaced all the problems, you know, little bad meters out there. And we got it down from two to three days down to about two to three hours now. And this is what me and Mike have been working on for two years.
So there are cl- there are cl- there, we have clients who have the, the, the meters that you, literally, a customer can go into a portal and see their meter working at, in real time. And the billing department can as well, you don't have to drive around with a handheld, literally sends information to a desktop in the town hall that shows this is, this is the meter you've been on, on a.
It's nice to have to.
Yeah, they are great.
Cause when they, when they come to a council meeting complaining about why their water bill's so high, you can pull it up on your phone and say, your meter's spinning, everybody home take a shower, well, no, I'm here, you gotta wait.
It's just technology that's coming into play and something for you all to think about as we talk about the strategic direction of the utilities. And that money, once again, is, is rates and it's, it's, you know, if you wanna put those things in place and don't want somebody to drive around for two hours and collect data and they can do something else, then that data is brought into the system. Now, there'll be some meters that you, you're always gonna have to do a read, right? You gotta drive around and get those. Um, or the, the antenna might not be right, and always a glitch, but that's just something to think about from a billing perspective.
And manage the exception.
Manage the exception. Rates are on here just because your rates probably aren't where they need to be. I, I won't say anything else. I don't wanna alarm anybody, I don't want the public to think that you're gonna begin the process of raising anything necessarily, but your rates probably are.
Once we get the budget done, we'll realize that they're not where they need to be.
Well, a great study should be back from Pat. I don't expect it to take it, take him too long, he was on vacation last week, so I imagine he's back working, um, for the water grid.
And it might have to be shifted after you do the budget exercise, which, uh, for Pat's book. So that's all I have on that topic. I wanted tonight to be the kickoff of, start to pay more attention to the inner workings, the ongoing, uh, different animals in the tax. Now, staff starts from a strategic. Uh, there are some staff members here, so you, you have to have them there. You have no choice, you have to. And I, I, I sent you all something that showed kind of a two-headed beast, which is a chief administrative officer and a chief operating officer. I would say the chief operating officer becomes your G M, um, at that point, but you could always have a G M and then split that out into superintendent of gas, superintendent of sanitary, superintendent of water. But there, there's, you, you have to have somebody who's eventually noted as the, the grand puba general manager of said utility. It's, and I think that, uh, I sent you an example of the structure, I can send you more examples, but I think we need to sit here and really chew on, relatively quick, in the next two months, come out of there with an organization chart that works better for leadership to understand their authority, for those that work under that leadership to understand who they report to and are getting advice from and coaching from, and leadership from, so that there's no question at all, nobody can try to have power play, um, in that there's one single voice leading charge. That doesn't have to be a person that holds the licenses, so the general manager can be the business line, right? You have a business planning person who knows the business workings and operations of the utility to be a G M. And the superintendent's underneath that, you gotta hold licenses. It doesn't have to be a licensed holder to be a general manager of utility. Now, if you're operating the plant, you know, you know, I, I would say I'd probably have, at that license, if you're operating gas, there's licenses. Last, deep for, in water, you got, you got things you have to have, you have to get. Um, so I think you need to take a long, hard look, relatively quickly, and get that established and in place. Because there's a bit of, not chaos, but consternation, or sometimes dissension, sometimes division, because that's not happening. Budget rates expansion, I just, we've already talked. Expanses probably is a big word right now. You have literally right now two home builders who wanna build quality homes in La Pella. If La Pella does not grow, and it can be managed smart growth, but if you don't get population and La Pella does not grow, you are going to struggle to maintain this town for the next thirty years, you just are, it's just the truth. But, we're gonna find out that your capacity at your plant is gonna allow for one of those home builders to compete with another one to get the capacity they need to build those homes. And I've always encouraged councils that I consult with or that I work for, always keep your infrastructure ahead of your development. Never, ever, so to, never, ever let developers take you down a road that you have to scramble in desperation to put infrastructure on. So, that expansion opportunity's gonna have to be well thought out, and one of those utilities is gonna have to expand really quickly, alright? And that's sanitary sewer suit. Um, just something to think about. Cause right now, your infrastructure's not ahead of the develop, not ahead of the desire, the desire of development, if, you know. Now, anything down in Lock Creek Regional, industrial, which is great, probably industrial's gonna happen in the, in those areas, fantastic, you're fine. You're good to go. Retail, uh, the revitalization of Main Street, I know is a big goal of this council. Um, infill projects to infill things into the Main Street area, uh, housing, whether that be multi-family and single-family, you have, you're fine. You have impediments to that. And a real good way to build parks to serve is build houses and have a park impact meeting in place of about twelve hundred dollars per permit that goes into the park. It's a beautiful thing, right? It's how you use development, new development, to fix the assets that you already have, uh, and bring them up, so to speak. You can't do that if you don't have utilities to provide. That's all I got tonight, I didn't wanna, Gary and I had talked one time, we talked about three hours, and I, I do think there's a point in time, maybe on a Saturday, unfortunately, Saturdays are always good, at nine to twelve, or, or especially if we go deep into the budget, and we go deep into the current staff, and deep into the future, especially staff structure and leadership. That probably should happen sooner than later, this would be my advice to my artists. And I can give you an example of USB ordinance that you can chew on that, it's, it's more people you have to have. But it gives the public an opportunity to sign another board and help with, y'all know what asset is the most valuable asset that the town owns? These utilities, probably the wastewater treatment plant. It's probably the single most valuable asset that you own. You have the collection system, then you're, then you're really a valuable asset, and how much do you pay attention to that?
Yep.
Until it doesn't work, probably.
It's in the ground, it's icy.
Well, thank you.
So somebody, yeah, so somebody runs through them.
We, we have talked about, uh, sewer plants.
It flow, uh, water when it rains.
Yes, refining and fixing that helps with our sewer numbers.
Yeah, sure, but you're still gonna need, you'll still need expansion of the plant. But yes, I, I mean, in the short term.
While the, while that's being designed and figured out and all that stuff, if we start digging into that, that's where we can have positive impact now.
The master plan, probably, very first project in that, and I don't wanna speak for the engineers, it's gonna be camera, uh, clean, and identify those I N I spots, rehabilitate your current collection system before you expand a new one. Uh, and that rehabilitation will help with I N I, you'll still have I N I from the laterals, you got old ladder, laterals might be older than the collection system, so. Yeah, I mean, so yes, to answer your questions, yes, it could definitely help you with your capacity of the plant. You're still gonna come up, you know, right now you got two home builders in total, and building almost three hundred and fifty homes. You have enough for about a hundred and twenty?
Yep, and a little bit. Maybe. But like we said once before, for every gallon you take out, that's a gallon of sewer water, so, take out thirty thousand gallons, you got three other gallons.
Wouldn't there's, wouldn't there's some, uh, I forget what the numbers were now, on a rain event?
Or flow, the inflow goes up.
Yep.
To the end.
One point two?
No, it's more than that, it's back to probably three to four, maybe five, nine.
So it goes up to like two.
Three and a half is pretty normal.
Yeah. But, uh, you guys are experienced in part of the, the, the.
I know that for your sewer master plan, one of the goals is to have, uh, application of S R F on April first so you can get in the pool of this extended money, cause the, part of the B I L money's gonna go away in twenty-six. Now, depending on who's elected president, Congress, and we can't talk about what is. I've heard that B I L two is being discussed by the Congress, we don't go there. Let's assume that the last round of S R F that, that creates additional money goes away in twenty-six. You at least wanna be on the list, um, and that's why the master planning process for now, sanitary sewer. I don't know if you had, you had something you wanted them to sign or talk about, maybe that's the next meeting?
Yeah, I think on the twenty-first, um, not the town council meeting, but maybe a, a meeting prior to that, we need to give you guys an update of where we're at on, uh, everything, get you guys to understand what the, uh, S R F signing process is, and then all that in for, to get on their, uh, list. And give you an update of where we're at on, uh, how much you think something's gonna cost out there, I mean, you know, we're leaning, I'll just tell you right now, we're leaning towards, uh, getting some property out there and building another plant. The plant that's there is, can be expanded, but there are portions of the plant, for example, the headworks, basically on the state highway, cannot be expanded, um, without a lot of pain. Uh, U V cannot be expanded, has to be replaced. Um, and I mentioned this to Gary, there are new processes since that plant was built, um, that I think would work much better than what you guys have now, much less maintenance. Um, so those are the things we wanna talk about on the twenty-first. More expansion. And just, just, just two things. Well, we could follow that plan, uh, two thousand five, seven, six. And I can speak to that now, but there is no way in the world we thought that all of this expansion would come, this would spread. We designed it to, well, the engineers, right, we designed it to double the capacity. And now, here it is, almost twenty years later, doubling the capacity now, I would. Cause that only gets us about sixty-nine dollars, you know, the custom function. So, there's, and yes, we could spin all that money and double it, and upgrade it and all that, but it's still not enough for, as Dax mentioned, curbs down the road.
I have nothing else.
Nothing else?
You may move to your.
At this time, if nobody has any further questions, I would, uh, make a motion to adjourn the utility services board meeting.